It is six o'clock and the Curville City Council is now in session. And Councilman Segerman is going to lead us in prayer and then in the pledge. If you'll stand, please.
You'll pray with me, please. Dear Lord, our city's been blessed with many, many gifts and many blessings. The City Council here this evening will help determine how to use those gifts and blessings. We ask that you would help us to have intelligent resources and discernment when doing so, and that we listen to our citizens and try to hear their concerns and their hopes. We thank you for our military and our local police who protect us and watch over us. And we pray that we have some rain in the near future. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I'll pledge with me, please. I pledge.
Let me remind you of some items just in regard to protocol. And if you have been here many times, you've heard these, but I think it's important to go over them again. If you're going to speak to an item on the agenda, you need to sign up beforehand. No one will be recognized unless they fill out a speaker form before a particular item is called or read for consideration. Also, that everyone must be recognized before speaking. Everyone shall refrain from abusive, rude, inappropriate conduct or language. And I want to thank you in advance for your participation tonight. Now, let's move to items of community interest that are of general interest to us.
Thank you, Mayor. And welcome to everyone tonight. It's going to be real brief. We have two quick announcements. Both of them have to do, once again, with the Parks and Recreation Department, which is having a terrific summer. This Saturday, we have two events, both in the same place. They both start at the Olympic Pool. The first one is the 2019 Kids' Triathlon. That's at nine o'clock in the morning. This is a great event that we have every year. We have swimming, then we go to biking, and then we go to running. I think EA, your kids participated in that last year. And there's still time to sign up for this. As I said, the start time's nine o'clock. This is sponsored by the Hill Country Bicycle Works. And come out and see it if you get a chance. It's a lot of fun. Good exercise, too. And the second one we have makes for great photo opportunities if you get a chance. If I can turn them. Oh, there we go. Is the annual Wet and Wag. Now, the Olympic Pool closes at five for general swimming on Saturday. But we, from five to seven, we have Wet and Wag. It's, again, another annual event. This year, it's sponsored by Dogology out of Fredericksburg. It takes place at the Olympic Pool. There's a limit of one dog per adult chaperone. And as I said, this is a lot of fun to watch. These dogs really enjoy getting in the pool. So if you, it's going to be hot Saturday, so if you get a chance, bring your dog out.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Other items of community interest?
Mr. Mayor, may I mention several things? The ABR Committee for the Appraisal District, this is the Board of Review, will be looking for new members. So if anyone would like to know more about it or would be interested in applying for that, they would like to have applications. So see me afterwards or give me a call, and we'll get you hooked up with applications and information. I think our library has some kudos coming. They were re-accredited. Am I saying that right? And so I think that is great. I'd like to do a shout-out to all of our water sewer employees. We saw the lift station over at Legion this last Friday. And I tell you what, we have no idea what it takes to keep our water and sewer running in this town. And it's, just kudos to all of them for what they do, and we appreciate it. It was a, it was a great tour. And then I'd like to thank all of the groups in town that had something to do with our back-to-school bashes and all the backpacks for all the kids. Our, our community just really, really stepped up. So, thank you all.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, let's go to the Visitors Citizens Forum. Remember that this, you have four minutes, and you're not addressing an agenda item. No discussion may take place, no action may be taken. And since items are not posted, the council staff cannot respond to questions. Whoever may refer questions to staff for follow-up or place an issue on a future agenda. Okay, do we have some speakers standing?
Yes, sir. We have two citizen speakers. Vincent Vogel.
Vincent Vogel, 212 Clay Street. I had some people asking me about the River Trail Master Plan and where the new trail was going to go. So I'd studied and looked into it. I noticed that some language was left out. At the last resolution that was passed, the City Council will not use eminent domain to acquire easements or right-of-ways for the River Trail or anything related to this public facility. I didn't hear much about council discussing that or why that was removed, or if it was, if you were aware that it was removed. Is that something that council was aware of?
You know.
Staff answer that?
If the Council Act was to direct us to answer.
All right.
You don't want to answer?
Mark, if you would?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Well, I hope you consider putting it back in there as a deep concern that have residential property on it.
All right. Thank you, Vincent. Okay?
Bruce Stricki.
This is a great place to live, except it was hot today. I think it said 105 on my display on the dashboard at one point this afternoon while we were driving around and looking at stuff. But this last week, I had an opportunity to participate in a workshop held here in town about changing your development story. And it was a very interesting look. A number of different municipalities participated, and we participated, and Drew was there. And it was really interesting to offer different opportunities to look at how we can do things. And even the thing I think, the biggest thing I took out of it was that we can even affect a tech stop road and how to, and a strategy on how to do that. If we wanted to, and I don't know of a specific need, but if we wanted to even address a tech stop road, strategies of how to do that and look at more pedestrian-friendly and shopping-friendly and walking environments and how to create landscape downtown and slow down speeds. And it was really a very positive conference, and I'm grateful that I had an opportunity to participate in that. And it happened right here in Curville. We had people from Wimberly and Casterville and Blanco and Bandera all over. Come here to Curville and Riverside Nature Center and spend a couple of days and really see some interesting information. And I'm hoping to bring you some ideas hopefully in the future. And so it's, and it's, and it's an exciting time because we're talking about all these changes to our zoning code, which we're going to talk about later, I'm not going to, and our sign ordinance and all. There's just so much stuff, and it's, I can tell you, it's taken a lot of time for guys like myself and other citizens that are involved in the community that are calling and talking to me to go through the hundreds of pages of documents that are being considered by all the different committees and citizens that are volunteering for this. And this is something that was started by Mark McDaniel and his great staff here with the Comprehensive Plan 2050. And of course, that was built on a foundation that was started by councils before you all. But that, that is just something that we should be really proud of as citizens. And then my last thing, my last thing is this week, we will be submitting building plans to the city for the famous door. And I have to apologize to Johnny Boreo and his wife, Murder, because they asked me very late in the process to finish those documents for them, and I, it's taken me way too long. I feel horrible. But we will be submitting those to the city. I'm probably going to need some help. I'll go down to Development Services in Dorothy and Mary Ann, and everybody in that office will help me get it done. But they're going to be in for review by the end of this week, or I'm going to be in real trouble next time I come here. Thank you all.
Good to hear.
All right, okay. You have someone else?
No, sir. That's all the citizen speakers.
Okay, all right. Okay. I think we have a presentation. And Ray, would you come forward?
A little nervous. Nervous coming down. Mayor, council, staff, thank you for allowing us a few moments of your busy schedule to do a brief recap of our 16th Annual River Cleanup. I know your agenda says Tara Bushnell. She's on a well-deserved vacation, so I'm pitch-hitting her for her tonight. The idea behind our river cleanup is to raise awareness of what's actually thrown out and washes into our river. We pick up stuff from paper cups to diapers, all the way up to bed springs, and I think EA even found a car out there. So you see, this plethora of trash is out there. We're trying to raise awareness of why we want to keep our river clean. This is the 12th year that the city has partnered with UGRA, and I will say that we don't think we'd enjoy the level of success that we have without your partnership. Thank you, the staff. Thank you to council for partnering with us. We started doing this, as I noted, 16 years ago. July 27th was a river cleanup. We had 25 local businesses sponsoring us, 526 participants cleaning up the river all the way from Hunt down to Center Point. And we picked up, this is a sad fact, this is not impressive, this is sad, 10,695 pounds of trash. 1,700 pounds of that was scrap that we were able to recycle. Let me just... We learn each year, this is the evolving process, as I noted, that we've done it a number of years now. We're seeing more and more groups participate, which is kind of neat because it's becoming a social event. It used to be just individuals that wanted to make a difference. Now, it's groups and organizations that want to get involved in keeping our river clean. We've also had more paddlers this year, and I'm having a hard time with your pointer. More paddlers this year than ever before, which actually got out on the water and cleaned up in the river itself. Do you recognize any of this crew? Nothing speaks buy-in and leadership than your executive team getting their hands dirty and actually keeping our river clean. Kudos to Mark McDaniel, EA Hoppy, and the rest of your team. Thank you for doing so. We also had, as a treat, the Curville Fire Department out there that dove on Flat Rock Park. I have to say that that was one thing I wanted to see that I did not get an opportunity to. I don't know what they picked up, but I know that they filled up several bags of trash from the bottom of Flat Rock Lake. We're very blessed to have a number of volunteers. I don't have time to go through all the volunteers we had. But one of the hardest jobs and the nastiest jobs is actually unloading the vehicles when they come in. Because a lot of that stuff is wet, it's been fermenting out there in the hot sun, and it stinks. And we're able to recruit a lot of people to unload that. It's a madhouse. If you've been down there, that one hour before we start our raffle, it's just a madhouse. Cars lined up and wanting to be unloaded quickly. As I noted, without the city's help, we wouldn't have been able to collect our 10,695 pounds of trash. I want to note that the City of Curville, Garrett Services, Curville Recycling, and Republic Services help us carry all of this off. The lessons learned, this is actually the beginning of our, the lessons learned is that we pre-register now. With 526 people, there's no way we could, we could register them when they came there at 8:30 or 9:00 o'clock. So we, this year, we had 414 pre-registered, and then the others that came in to make up that difference, we registered as, as they came in. The neat thing that we added, and if you were there, I hope you got to see it, was our ecological fair. We had nine exhibitors, and basically, this is, again, an educational tool to raise awareness of why we want to keep our river clean. We do this to show that, that there's critters in the river, there's, there's fly fishing, there's economic benefit. All of these play a factor into keeping our river clean. And then, a lot of people come to compete, obviously. The biggest, we gave prizes to the biggest and the most unusual things found. The biggest was a pipe that we could not fit in the frame on the pitcher. You would've just seen a black line across there. So we didn't have that. But this boat was found, and if you'll notice on the boat, you'll see, look on the side, it says Grandpa's Getaway. You're going to see that again in a moment, so keep that in mind. But we also found, and this is going to date you, if you laugh at this, you're going to, you're going to be dated. Lionel Richie cassette tape. Christmas lights, 1954 license plate, and an old plane ticket, which we don't know if it's still usable or not. At the end of the day, we wrap up with a big thank you and a raffle. Thanks to our generous donors, we had 39 raffle prizes, free hot dogs, and free pizza for everyone that came. We also had a great selection of goodies in the Curville Garden Club. This year, as an added bonus, the Hill Country Arts Foundation collected stuff while it was being pulled out of the, out of the river and conducted a workshop, and they had these, these young people assemble these things. If you look at the top-left corner, you see Grandpa's Getaway. Assemble these wonderful art pieces out of this trash, which gives a new life of transforming that art, that trash into art, and gives you a visual of what was actually in the river and what not to do. That's, that's the point we want to stress, what not to do. And then finally, I want to recognize that we had 25 generous donors. Please, you'll see them in the paper, please patronize them because of supporting a local endeavor. And I want to give a special thanks to Mark McDaniel and EA Hoppy for partnering with us once again. Again, we helped achieve our level of success with your participation. Thank you very much. And special note to Stuart Barron, Joe Mayners, and Isaac Rodriguez and Philip Garcia for all that you've done to help us from, from cleanup to hauling the trash barrels off. And to conclude, Mayor, you were unable to make it. You texted me that you had an emergency, but we saved the shirt for you. And I know if you wear this, Deena will never lose you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much.
If you get, well, you ought to take the opportunity and go out to the, what is it called? LJRA, UGRA Building?
Yes, sir.
On Lehman. UGRA has done an edge escape all around there, demonstrating the plants to be used, and zero-scape, and how you can conserve, how you can conserve water. It's really, really nice. They, in fact, they've been awarded a special award for that. All right, we come now to the consent agenda. And tonight, it is lengthy, but we will vote on it altogether unless a council member or citizen wants to pull something for consideration.
Mayor, a citizen wants to pull 4C, 4E, 4G, and another citizen wants to speak on 4E.
Okay, give it to me again.
4C.
Okay.
4E. 4G.
All right. And then the citizen wants to speak on?
4E.
4E, okay. Okay. All right, those are pulled, we will vote on separately. And then, in the meantime, we will vote on the rest of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion in regard to this consent agenda?
I will move, Mr. Mayor, that we vote, that we approve. Should I do 4A, do it by, by the numbers? Is that the best? Okay, 4A, 4B, 4D, 4F, 4H, 4I, 4J.
All right, okay.
I'll second that.
Do you make a motion? Okay, we have a second?
I think Delaine second.
Yeah. Okay, you got it.
Motion and second.
All in favor of that motion, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay. It passes 5-0. Okay, someone wants to speak to the construction contract with Bernhard.
George Barudy.
1616 Glen Road. I really didn't want to speak that much, but it was just, at the parks, when they talked about the extension, Parks Board or whatever, he talked about having some necessary easements still left to do. This agenda bill, I think, says all of them were obtained, so I was just asking, how many easements did we actually end up having to get? And they were all obtained, I assume, because that's what the agenda bill said, so I'm just asking that.
I'm going to refer that to staff.
That's it. I defer, but I think it was seven.
Yes, we had, in total, along with the agreement that we had with Shriners, which was the most extensive easement that we had across their property, which has a little bit of alignment that we're still working through on the part from Quinlan Creek up to the trailhead. But all of the other easements have been acquired.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, 4E.
Want to go ahead and vote on 4C then?
Yeah, yeah, we will. All right.
I'd make a motion that we approve item 4C.
All right, we have a second?
I'll second. I'll second it.
Motion second, all in favor of 4C, raise a hand. It's 5-0. Then, 4E, the Main Street Advisory Board.
George Barudy.
1616 Glen Road. So, the main question, I mean, I read it, I see the benefits to the program, but other than annual dues and the cost of the position, are there any other costs that are kind of mandated involved in recreating this? And this is talking about the Main Street Advisory Board, but I'm, I guess I'm asking about the program in general. So are there other costs besides those two? Does it evolve? No.
Not that I'm aware of.
And does any, I'm not aware of why we shut it down or slowed it down or whatever we did a few years back. But what changed between then and now? Like, what's prompting us to go ahead and restart it now? Was there some motivating factor, or did we just decide, what the heck, let's do this?
Well, from my perspective, part of it is, and I'll defer to staff, but, but through the 2050 Plan, neighborhood development and placemaking, as well as focusing on the downtown revitalization, would be a reason for recreation of a board like the Main Street Board. It's, it's refocusing, and that's what our citizens have said we wanted to, to look at as a, as an area of focus.
Okay, that's good.
And also, I'd say that Curville was granted a one-year leave of absence in regard to change of leadership and so forth, so we're stepping back in.
So how, how long have we not been in the program? Because I thought it was longer than that, wasn't it?
Yeah, it has been a little bit longer than, than that, but, yeah.
And George, also, you know, with the emphasis on downtown and the things that are happening down there, this is something that will help bring continuity and that kind of thing to all of that, so.
Okay.
William Brechter.
Do we vote?
We need to vote.
705 Water Street, and I'll be very brief. I'm here to applaud the council for a re-entry of the city into the Main Street program. It will be advantageous to downtown, it will be advantageous to revitalization of downtown, and I applaud you for recreating the Main Street Board. My wife and I have both served on it in the past. It has been good for this city, it's been good for downtown. And I also applaud you for creating the, protecting the downtown core and creating the arts and culture area, which we'll talk about later tonight. And I encourage you to vote for this Main Street program. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. And what is your pleasure in regard to 4F?
I move that we...
4E.
4E.
4E, yes, right.
So I move we approve.
Second.
We got a motion second, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay. And now, inter-local cooperation agreement between the City of Curville and Headwaters Groundwater Conservation District.
George Barudy.
I just asked from here. All I was looking for was the inter-local agreement itself. It wasn't in the packet, I was just wondering if that was available.
Okay, okay. All right. On the inter-local cooperation agreement?
Make a motion we pass 4G.
I second.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, thank you, and it passes 5-0. Now we come to the public hearing and ordinances. And it is 6:25, and we have opened the public hearing. All right, Ms. McElhanen, will you read that in for us?
Excuse me, ordinance number 2019-17, an ordinance approving and adopting the City of Curville, Texas zoning code, a comprehensive rewrite of the city's zoning regulations in accordance and aligned with the Curville Comprehensive Plan K-2050. Said rewrite to be known as the City of Curville, Texas zoning code and found within a new Chapter 60 of the city's Code of Ordinances. Approving and adopting the official zoning map of the city, providing procedures to amend said map, requiring a staff report as to implementation by a specific date, repealing in their entirety all ordinances as part of ordinances inconsistent herewith, providing an open meetings clause, providing a cumulative clause, containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a penalty or fine of not more than $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof, ordering publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to this subject.
All right, Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Before I introduce our consultants, I'd like to say thank you for counsel and the support with the appointment of the Code Review Committee following the adoption of Curville 2050 Plan. One of the big landmark pieces that we've had in our implementation plan started this process almost a year ago with the appointment of the Code Review Committee. Several meetings with staff, with the consultants, with public, and the Code Review Committee. So it's been a lengthy process, but it's been a good process. And with that, I'll introduce Mark Bowers with Kim Lee Horn.
Thank you, Drew. Mayor Blackburn and members of the Curville City Council. My name is Mark Bowers. I am a planner, urban designer with the firm Kim Lee Horn. And I will be walking you through the first portion of the presentation that we have for this evening. So this evening, the outline of the presentation, we're going to go through an overview of the process and the approach that we've taken to developing this overall zoning ordinance. We'll walk through the draft zoning code and particularly the highlights as recommended by the P&amp;Z as the code left that body and changes since the P&amp;Z public hearing took place. And then we'll go through the draft zoning map with a focus on the highlights as recommended by P&amp;Z, and then ultimately turn it back to you for discussion and for public hearing. So as a part of the overview of the process and approach, Drew touched on the significant input that's taken place over almost the past year related to the zoning ordinance. We started off with a diagnostic meeting with city staff last October, November timeframe. That diagnostic meeting was really to go through from the staff's perspective the things that they were struggling with, with the existing code, to start to identify those things that needed to be addressed and corrected as we move forward with the new code. Certainly, multiple periodic project coordination calls throughout the development of the code. Stakeholder interviews that took place October 15th through 17th of 2018. We met with multiple stakeholders, property owners, business owners, people that work with the code on a regular basis in the construction industry, developers, architects, builders. Across the board, we wanted to get their take on what were the issues that were making the code cumbersome and things that they wanted to see addressed, as well as those things that were important to keep, that they wanted to see move forward through the process. We had six meetings of the Citizens Review Committee, we'll call them the CRC throughout this presentation, starting in November of 2018 and going on through June of this year. Joint P&amp;Z and City Council Work Session to get input from you on the preliminary direction. That was in March of this year. Community Open House on May 16th of this year. And ultimately, two Planning and Zoning Commission public hearings on June 20th and July 19th of this year. So we want to go through at a very high level some of the key things that we heard from the stakeholder interviews that really led to the basic direction on the things that we need to be addressed, and ultimately, a lot of the goals that were associated with the development of this overall zoning ordinance. And these were comments that... And these were comments that really recurred, uh, through multiple interviews, and we started to really realize these were issues, there were problems that needed to be addressed. Some of those things, the code is cumbersome, difficult to navigate, unclear, and requires too much interpretation. Um, one of the things we heard, economic development requires a predictable regulatory environment, developers are willing to comply with reasonable standards if they know the rules. Um, we heard in the new code, be reasonable and logical, don't add too many new requirements. So that, that really led us to a lot of what we tried to do is be Curville-specific as much as we could through the process of developing the code. Um, other things, there are too many zoning districts in the Curville code, and the districts are too similar, we'll talk in a little bit more detail about the number of districts you had and how complicated that existing code was, too many uses required a, a conditional use permit, and the process is difficult. So that led to some overall project goals, uh, that we, we fleshed out with the, uh, CRC at their first meeting. Uh, number one was to create a user-friendly ordinance, uh, to simplify and streamline and clarify the code, revise out-of-date standards and uses, address inconsistencies, and minimize the need for interpretation by staff. We really believe that creating a user-friendly code is one of the first steps to improving economic development in your community. Um, we also heard min- uh, as a goal, minimizing non-conformities resulting from the new code and zoning map, we want to make sure that people who are in business and able to do what they're doing today as much as possible are able to do the same things going forward. And then finally, support the Curville twenty fifty vision. I think as Drew stated, this is really, this whole process is linked back to that twenty fifty vision, and how do we get ordinances in place that are in support of that overall vision, and enabling that, uh, vision to move forward and become implemented. So I'm gonna turn it over at this point to Monica Hyde, uh, who will be talking through some of the specific, uh, aspects of the overall zoning code.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, appreciate you seeing us again this evening, and we're very excited about being at this point in the process, because as you know, we've worked quite hard and involved many of your citizenry in getting us to this point, so we're looking forward to the next step or two. Uh, one of the things I wanted to tell you is that I'm gonna be focusing on the code as it was passed forward by the P and Z. There are a few slides later in the overall presentation that Drew will cover about some issues that have come up even since then, so, uh, those will, will be handled by, uh, him because he was really involved in the discussions much more so than we were. Um, so the, I wanted to also point out that, uh, we had, in addition to the goals that Mark mentioned in his first few slides, we had some additional, uh, thoughts in our heads that inspired us as we worked through this process, those came out of the stakeholder interviews, the discussions with staff, and, uh, and other things, so among those are some, some items, uh, that, that inspired our approach. We wanted to preserve the existing code where it was possible, we needed to take care of a couple of sort of housekeeping items, like adding some standard verbiage that most zoning clo- codes included, and reorganizing the document a little bit to improve its flow. Uh, we felt that there was a need to expand the list of permitted uses, so that staff didn't have to make so many interpretations when someone came to them about a particular activity, and also, we knew that there was a need to define all those new uses that we were adding, as well as the ones that were currently allowed and not defined. We wanted to develop a more consistent format for the various zoning districts, because, uh, people were having to flip through many locations within the code in order to find the basic information that they needed, so we're, again, trying to be more user-friendly here. Within the district regulations themselves, rather than basing height and setbacks on the uses that are, were allowed, which is a very unusual way to do it, uh, it seemed more reasonable to base those on, on the zoning district, which is what most communities do. We wanted to look for some options to help address your housing affordability challenge and create some new districts to help you implement the Curville twenty fifty plan. Um, I'll also mention to you that I apologize, I know many of you have seen this presentation in this, essentially the same form for, uh, quite some time, um, but since this is a hearing for the public as well, we feel, feel like we needed to go back and start and hit it pretty much comprehensively.
Amber alert. Sorry.
Okay?
Yeah.
Um, the first couple of articles really just address some, some administrative provisions, they give a title to the ordinance, talk about its intense and intended purpose, uh, that it's to conform with the comprehensive plan and other plans that you may have approved, like the thoroughfare plan, for example. It also talks about how to handle, uh, zoning applications that are in conflict with your comprehensive plan, because you will have opportunities that have not been anticipated before, and so you shouldn't have to turn those down if it's a good, good thing for your community, so this helps you kind of get through that decision-making process. Uh, then there's an article that includes, uh, basic terms and concepts, definitions for those, which I think, um, I hope will be very helpful to those that are having to implement the ordinance on a daily basis, and then also to define, as I said, each, uh, item in the land use table. The next couple of articles talk about the P and Z and ZBA. Uh, some of, some of the, these new additions just have to, uh, just address things that were perhaps covered under one of the board sections, but not the other, uh, and needed to be addressed in both places, so we did that. We wanted to talk about, uh, a couple of new proposals, one is that your P and Z alternates become regular members. Currently, you have five alternates, uh, five members and two alternates, and the plan would to be, would be to have seven regular members, and that would make the quorum four. So those that have been on that board and staff felt like that was a better, better way to proceed going forward, I think part of it had to do with being able to get enough people here to actually have a meeting. The ZBA will continue as five, uh, members and two alternates, but unlike what your current code allows, all the members will participate in discussion on issues. Uh, the alternates will vote only if there's an absent member. The other thing, uh, that still means that there, that four out of five people will have to be present in order to hear a case, because that's required by state law, that's seventy-five percent of, of five. Uh, then we talk a little bit about the duties and powers of each board and some issues like organization, meetings, and records, and that sort of thing. Uh, Article six talks about how to appeal an administrative, uh, interpretation and how to, uh, what to do with a variance request. Then we get into the, uh, oops, I'm ahead of myself, aren't I?
You threw a whole lot of slides.
Oh, my gosh. Only, right? You wish.
Wow, that, you could be an auctioneer.
Give me the clip.
I just had my finger resting on it.
Maybe we did.
Monica, Monica, could you go back and start over?
Yes. So you want to hear it one more time?
I think we might.
Are you, are you serious? Okay, good.
But we're starting to learn his subtleties here.
Alright, that Brett, that thing going off is, is throwing me.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so then Article six talks about what to do if somebody brings you a, um, a variance request or an appeal to an administrative official's determination. Alright, then we get into the zoning districts themselves. Uh, we start off by, um, talking about what to do with newly annexed territory, if someone doesn't bring you an annexation proposal with, with a zoning request going with it, uh, now you have the ability to just, uh, zone that property to ag, agricultural, which is a new district that was created as part of this effort. If there are zoning district boundaries that are not clear, because they don't follow along some sort of physical, um, you know, um, feature, like a, a street or a railroad right away, or even a lot line, then the director of the, um, of the planning and/or development services area would be, uh, making the interpretation of where that boundary lies. In terms of the zoning districts themselves, if you remember, we had many, we identified that as an issue earlier, uh, very early in the process, and in fact, we didn't even have to meet with you guys to note, to notice that. There were forty-nine different zoning districts, and, uh, we have reduced that to seventeen. You can see on the left is the legend for the new set of zoning categories, and on the right is the legend for the old set. Also, I'll point out to you that, uh, we, because your old, um, categories relied in many locations on geographic area, as opposed to the use that the district represented, the color scheme was not what most planners, most developers are used to, so the color scheme has been also changed to be sort of an industry standard, as opposed to, uh, unique to Curville. Just, again, just to make it easier for people who do the work with the ordinance to, uh, understand it right off the bat. So let's talk a little bit about the, uh, overall strategy for the districts. Oh, alright, the residential district, we generally maintain the, uh, area regulations and height as much as possible, or relax them just a little bit, again, because we were trying not to create non-conformities. Um, and we have also been able to include some additional options for smaller lots in the R-two and RM districts, uh, as small as thirty-three hundred square feet if an alley can provide, be provided, or forty-five hundred square feet if not. Uh, your smallest district before, I think, was six thousand, or fa- small slot size. In the non-residential districts, we maintain the area regulations and height or relax them as much as possible, again, same reason, try not to create non-conformities. Uh, we actually eliminated the side and rear setback requirement for non-residential uses unless they're adjacent to single-family. All your districts had a side and rear setback, um, but this, this should give the developer a lot more flexibility, but there are some trade-offs, uh, in the form of graduated height and setback scheme if you are adjacent to a single family, and that's simply to protect your neighborhoods. Um, and the area regulations are going to be determined by, by height, I mean, sorry, by zoning district rather than by use as they currently are. Uh, the, the strategies for each of the special district varies depending upon their intent. So we go into just a little bit more detail in each of those categories. The residential districts, uh, the RE, uh, state residential district is one that was created, uh, because the, the, uh, Curville twenty fifty plan calls for that, which means the community asked for it. Those will be one-acre lots, the setbacks and the other regulations pretty much match your R-one district. The R-one district, which formerly required a, a six thousand square foot lot under the new code, would, would allow five thousand square feet. The R-one A district is the R-one district, so five thousand square foot lot, but it also gives persons the ability to have an accessory dwelling you in it, an apartment, for example, either within the main structure, or if it's outside of the main structure as a freestanding building, uh, that's permitted as well now, as long as it doesn't occupy too much of the rear yard area. The R-two medium residential district replaces your RC district that's currently in the code, so what it does is allow a very wide array of housing types under that single zoning category, and this is the district where we have, uh, allowed those additional smaller lot sizes, the forty-five hundred and thirty-three hundred square foot lot sizes. Also, now there are specific regulations for patio homes, townhomes, and duplexes, which were really hard to, I'm not even sure they were there in the past, uh, quite like they should have been in order for them to be usable to people. That, and I say that simply because we had, one of our early stakeholder interviews, a gentleman said, "I would do duplexes, townhomes, but you don't, it's not allowed by zoning," because he couldn't find it in the code. So now it should be easy enough to find. The R-three district is your multifamily district, uh, and what's different about it from the old district, among other things, is that it is exclusively for, for a multifamily and doesn't allow single-family. The RM district is essentially your R-two district, the one with the broad variety of housing types, plus manufactured, uh, homes are allowed. Um, and then the RT residential transition district, you have that now, and what it does is accommodates both residential and non-residential uses in a single category. I think the basic, the idea was to kind of transition between re- existing residential and non-residential uses, so that, that whole, uh, essential concept is maintained there. There's a little bit of a switch-up in, uh, building sizes and, uh, that sort of thing for, for the buildings that contain non-residential uses, um, in that churches and schools are now exempt. It's very hard to have a church in three thousand square foot or a school in three thousand square foot, so we've exempted those. If we then move to the non-residential districts, um, all of these names are new. The C-one neighborhood commercial district basically is the most restrictive of the commercial districts, and it's based upon the most restrictive of your current districts, the limited retail and limited personal service districts, for example. Uh, one thing we did was increase the allowable building size from three thousand square foot to five thousand square foot, with a maximum of ten thousand square feet per lot, and we have added drive-through windows as a, uh, CUP use. C-two is sort of the next step up in intensity, so it allows all the uses in C-one, plus, um, some, some of the lighter auto-related activities, such as part sales, minor repair, car wash. Total building area in the C-two district is capped at a hundred thousand square feet. C-three is general commercial, it allows the C-one and C-two uses, and then it adds heavier activities, uh, auto-related ones such as, uh, major repair dealerships, that sort of thing. Uh, it allows hotel, motel, movie theaters, again, just some more intense activities and some that have a greater, a propensity to have outdoor storage. Uh, and there is no cap on the amount of building square foot per lot in the C-three district. Then, in addition, there is an industrial and manufacturing category, where all the traditional types of industrial uses that you can, you know, imagine, manufacturing, assembly, uh, processing, warehousing, that sort of thing, as well as agricultural services and some of the heavier commercials uses, like auto dealerships and major repair. Uh, and then again, out, uses that are gonna have, uh, a lot of outdoor storage associated with it. As, and, in a district like that where you might not normally have, have sort of, uh, employee support services like restaurants and banks, we have, uh, allowed those. So in general, the setbacks and the maximum building size requirements have been allowed, uh, relaxed to allow some flexibility and minimize non-conformity, but we did add that height setback, uh, system to protect your single-family neighborhoods adjacent to non-residential. The six, uh, special districts, I'll talk about one at a time, and each of them has its, uh, unique purpose and set of standards. The first one is the Downtown Arts and Culture Center. All this map does is show, and it's actually, uh, reflection of the, of the old Downtown Arts and Culture District and Core, uh, area, but it just shows that there, there is, uh, it's replacing what you used to call CBD. We did maintain the downtown core area and the boundaries of that downtown core are the same as the previous, those are the previous downtown core. That particular district, the emphasis is to be on walkability and an environment that will support the arts and culture, that rich arts and culture, uh, offerings that you have here in Curville, uh, just as the Curville twenty fifty plan envisioned. And it allows a mix of residential and non-residential uses so that they sort of support each other, uh, and those uses can take place either in separate buildings or in, 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 within the same structure. We did, uh, come to conclusion that we would waive parking for existing buildings in the entire district that's consistent with the current code. Uh, this particular set of regulations focuses on how the building relates to the street. So here, in many districts, you're likely to see a minimum building setback. Here, in this particular district, you are gonna have a maximum setback, and, uh, with allowances for some architectural features to encroach. Along the arterials, um, we were asked to consider allowing a different sort of a scheme because, uh, Sydney Baker and Main Street are really commercial corridors, so they function a little bit differently than some of your, uh, some of your other streets within, within this district. So there we have, we are putting in here a minimum setback of zero with no maximum, so that gives a whole lot of flexibility to someone who wants to do something along either of those corridors within the Downtown Arts and Culture District. The mixed-use district, um, is, is a new one that we created to support some of the concepts in the, in the strategic catalyst areas in, uh, Curville twenty fifty. So it also allows mixing of residential and non-residential uses, either on a single lot or in a single building. This is another one where the relationship of the, of the building to the street is important, so depending upon the category of roadway, uh, the setbacks would be either ten or fifteen feet. If they have, if a misuse happens to be applied along a highway, it's gonna be larger for obvious reasons. Um, we are proposing that, within this district, um, if there is a building that contains residential units, that open space needs to be provided to support the people that are living in that, uh, building, uh, the open space would account, uh, amount to eight percent of the footprint, so like the first floor area of the, uh, the building that contains the residential units, the property owner would be required to maintain that area, um, and it would, it need, would need to be selected, the area I'm talking about would need to be selected and approved so that it was safe for people using it. Uh, we are suggesting that reduced parking requirements be allowed, because the whole point of a mixed-use district is allow, is to allow someone to accomplish multiple things in, you know, parking one time, so, uh, residents can walk to services, uh, the mix of use, uh, uses could allow somebody to go to the dentist and then go get lunch, if their mouth was not still dead. So, you know, some things like that, that just, that seem li- So, you know, some things like that that just, that seem logical with a concept of that sort. The PD Plan Development District, you, you have this category already, but we're suggesting some changes to it. First of all, that a minimum five acres be required, and there is a reminder in the, in the ordinance itself that the goal of a PD is to create a better, more unique development, not to avoid standard code requirements that apply under other district regulations. So in exchange for more flexible requirements, because this is essentially a situation where an applicant will bring to you a set of standards, like, you know, height, setback, parking, all of that, they bring that to you, but in order for you to determine whether those, those standards are appropriate, they have to bring you drawings and that sort of thing. So in exchange for flexibility, you get some more information upfront. Once the regulations in the PD are adopted, there are criteria under which minor revisions could be made, and those would be limitations on the amount of building square footage increase or residential unit increase, also predicated on no reduction in setbacks or parking ratios. You see them listed there. Anything that doesn't fall within those criteria would be considered a major amendment and would come back to the P&amp;Z and council for review, just like the original zoning application. So notification to property owners, all of that. The public and institutional district would accommodate public facilities and special gathering places. Residential would no longer be a permitted use, it's just sort of hard to plan around that. Exceptions would be for a rectory or parsonage or for a dormitory. And I'll point out to you that worship facilities and public schools are allowed in any zoning district, not only in the public and institutional district. The requirements here are generally flexible, but they're very compatible with those in other districts. A height of 35 feet would be allowed, but then, again, with the, with increased setback from residential, you could, you could achieve greater height. Screening is required for public and institutional uses, adjacent to residential property. Worship facilities and public schools are exempt from that requirement, and outdoor storage is generally prohibited. In the airport district, there are kind of two different sorts of properties. There is the airport property itself, where we reduce some setbacks and are not including any specific parking requirement. There are properties that would be zoned, airport district, that are not part of the airport land. There, the uses would be compatible with the activities that are underway at the airport. Most of them are industrial. Many would require a CIP, CUP. And then we do, again, have some services that would be for people who work or visit at the airport, like banks, convenience stores, those sorts of things. Setbacks match those in IM, industrial and manufacturing. Height limit is 45 feet, plus whatever FAA limitations may apply. And then additional height and setback restrictions adjacent to residential, just like with the other commercial type categories. Then the new AG Agriculture District would accommodate agriculture uses, obviously, but it could also serve as a holding category for newly annexed property, as we talked about earlier. Minimum lot size there is five acres, and the, the standards pretty much match the R1 district, but a little bit more height permitted for agricultural structures. All right, so within each district, there's a, you know, there's a set of standards included in a, in a bunch of text. Each of the districts that I just described to you will include a purpose statement, a general description of uses, and then a table that shows the height and area regulations. Again, the whole idea being so that somebody could just, at a glance, find the information that they're looking for. Now, that doesn't apply for PD, because as I mentioned to you earlier, somebody brings you those regulations, as opposed to living by some, you know, something that's already predetermined. Now, depending upon the situation in the zoning district, there may be other, other types of standards that are required. Building regulations, access limitations in a few situations to certain types of streets, typically in the residential district, regulations for accessory buildings, just several things that may apply in some districts but not in others. But we wanted to get them all in the same place, under the zoning category where they apply. The next slide has a, an excerpt, it's a table, it's from the R1 district, and what you're seeing here is, on the, in the left column, you're seeing the characteristic or the feature or the requirement, if you want to call it that. So you just see lot size, lot width, setbacks, building height, and parking. And then, on the right-hand column, you see the standard that applies to that particular zoning district for that particular requirement. We are able to get the parking in the residential districts, but because of the variety of uses that's in the nonresidential districts, you have to go to a separate table for that. Setback in height, adjacent to residential, so I'll, I'll kind of walk through this particular scheme. In general, it's going to apply to nonresidential and special district properties adjacent to single family, all right? And when we talk about single-family residential, we're speaking of RE, residential estate, R1, which is kind of your standard, standard lot, R1A, which allows the accessory dwelling unit also, R2, the district that allows so many different housing types, RM, although not, not applied to manufactured housing, or if you have a mixed-use or PD that includes single-family patio home or townhome duplex, it would apply there. All right, and here's the way it works. If you look at, at the slide, you'll see a graphic, and what you'll see is, I'm going to, I'm going to point to the slide, I'll try to, like, maybe take turns where I point. But on the slide on the right, if I can get Dot.
You can use your mouse, I think.
What?
The mouse.
Oh. All right, let's see where this ends up. Oops, not that. Okay, I, oh, there it is. Okay, there it is. All right, all right. So I'm on this slide here on the right, and you'll see this empty area. The black is to indicate the residential property line and the buildings you see there. So what you see is, in, in this particular example, there's a 25-foot setback between the building and that residential property line. So that would be a minimum requirement, anywhere you have this type of an adjacency. Now, as you'll see in the note up there, that doesn't mean that that property just sits there. It can be used, because it can be used for parking, it can be used for driveways, it can be used for landscaping. It's just that there cannot be a building sitting on it, all right? Now, at the 25-foot point, the, then you can begin constructing your building or placing your building. And at that point, you have the ability to go to 35 feet of height with windows only at the first door, first floor level. So if you happen to have some sort of an atrium-style building, so that it's open, you know, there's an open area, that's okay, you can do that, but you cannot have windows above what is, you know, your standard sort of first-floor section. And obviously, in this slide, the yellow building is a single family. All right. All right, so now I'm going to move over to the other slide, just to be fair. In this example, you have 50 feet of setback, all right? So if you, if you're willing and able to set your building back at the 50-foot line, again, you can park in this area, you can, you put a driveway there, you can landscape. But if you, if you want to sit back at 50 feet, then you can immediately go to, to 35 feet in height with no restriction on the windows. So you could do two stories there, whereas in the other one, you can really only do one. And then, the last, oops, then, last example. Okay, the last example is if, at 100 feet, and again, if your building is a lot larger, it's very possible that you're going to need this for parking. At 100 feet, you can immediately go to 45 feet of building height with windows. So that's three stories, windows wherever you want to put them. And then, importantly, beyond that point, you see the little triangle above there, you can start increasing your building height one foot for every one foot of setback, additional setback that you provide. So you could, you know, right up here, you see this, there's an additional story beyond back here, that's mine, sorry. So anyway, we're trying, we're trying to protect the neighborhood, but also provide a system whereby the, the nonresidential developer has some flexibility as well. All right, hope that makes sense. This will take me one second. Time to go to the J. All right. So you'll notice on that property line from the slide you just left, that, that we've got a fence or some sort of screening, which is a requirement where you have this, this sort of an adjacency. Screening could consist of one of several options, solid masonry, or weather-resistant wood, or you could combine those two things. Also, chain link or ornamental fencing, so decorative metal, vinyl panels with landscaping, that's not an option that's currently available. There is a prohibition for chain link with slats, except in the public and institutional uses. Screening would need to be six to eight feet in height, and there may be situations where topography or heavy vegetation or something of that sort would suggest that fence or wall is not necessary. So if that's the case, then that would be something that the P&amp;Z could approve as an alternate method of screening. We did want to pay attention to outdoor storage of materials and supplies and inventory, that sort of thing. It's limited to the C2, C3, industrial and airport districts, and again, it would need to be screened from a single-family property. All right, there is an article that talks about supplemental requirements for certain uses. There are some types of activities that have just a little bit of a unique characteristic associated with them that may need some additional standards. For example, that first set of activities is fuel and gasoline sales, auto, auto service and repair, car washes. Because of the fuels and the oils and that sort of thing, we're suggesting that a minimum distance be provided from the flood plain in the Nimitz impoundment area to those kinds of uses to protect your water supply. Facilities with drive-through or drive-in service, we've got some, some graphics put together that address the issue of stacking space. The thing, you know, if a facility has a drive-through or a drive-in window associated with it, it's going to be doing quite a bit of business through it as a general rule. So what happens is, as you can, I mean, you all know, during peak times, lots of lot, lots of cars in line. So this is a, a way of trying to anticipate a reasonable level of volume of traffic at the drive-through and provide for it. Your current code already has some special provisions for daycare services and community gardens, home occupations, there are several others. And then, in this particular section, we actually end up referring to other portions of the code for uses like wind energy systems, sexually-oriented businesses, and various types of antennas. So that's, that's that particular article. Zoning changes in conditional use permits, so this is, this has to do with how to go about making a request. For both types of requests, your current ordinance requires a whole lot of information way early in the process before somebody, you know, has even, it was, it's requiring engineering-level information before you even have a zoning, you know, approval. So what we wanted to do was scale back the requirements for an actual application to not, not, nothing but the type of information that you really need in order to make a decision. So the form, application form, description of the meets and bounds of the property, the fee, all of that sort of thing. And then depending upon what type of an application is coming in, there may be additional detail that's required. When we talk about the zoning change process itself, the biggest, the biggest change in the old or current and proposed regulations has to do with those submittal requirements because the review procedures are largely dictated by state law, so we really don't have an opportunity to mess with those. The conditional use permit situation, we've talked about the fact, and Mark, I believe, hit on it earlier, on the number of CUPs that your current ordinance requires is noticeably high, it's quite noticeable. And so our goal was to kind of reduce the number of CUPs. It, it's a situation where if, if it's a use that keeps getting approved as a CUP, then it should be a permitted use. So we kind of tried to, to take that into consideration. Again, simplifying the submittal requirements, there was a list of uses that was allowed without a CUP. Well, now we're going to have a nice expanded land use table, so they'll show up in there, we don't need this extra, extra list. There are some sections that we maintained with regard to how long or what could terminate a CUP. And then, as with zoning, the procedures for review are pretty much laid out by state law, so those had to be left alone. The next slide talks about some, some changes that are aimed at making for more efficient meeting processes for both zoning change and a CUP application. If the P&amp;Z and/or council wanted to recess a public hearing, if they will do it, recess it at the meeting to a specific date, then there's no need for you to have to re-notify. So saves time, saves money, everybody knows when to be prepared to come back. That's, so that's a new, a new suggestion. Also, if the P&amp;Z recommends a denial, then the only reason that an application would proceed to the council would be if the applicant asks within 10 days in writing to go ahead and, and come before you. Otherwise, what you see very often is if they get a clear message from the P&amp;Z about why they're not approving something, then they'll just as soon go back, make some modifications, and bring a revised application back, and then the P&amp;Z can make a recommendation on that. So, so again, the goal is to make, to clear up your, you know, your agendas a bit, but also to, to bring you applications that are approvable. And then the last one, we're adding to the CUP process, the requirement that a three-quarter vote of the council is, is necessary in order to approve an application over a 20% written protest. It's already in the zoning chapter, it's state law, so now it's a, it's stated clearly in CUP as well. Now, this is just a quick reminder that we have spoken with, with you and the CRC about traffic impact analysis. I just wanted to make, make it clear that we, we are recommending that a traffic impact analysis be performed under certain conditions. That will be something that's on the zoning application checklist, it's not in the ordinance per se. Those, just for your information, those two criteria or conditions would be if, based upon an industry-accepted method of calculating the number of trips that a development generates, if it will generate more than 1,000 new trips per day, or more than 150 new trips in the morning or evening peak hours, then a, a traffic impact analysis, a fuller traffic impact analysis would be required. So what we would anticipate is that there would be a little worksheet where the applicant, though, when, by the time they come to you, they're going to have an idea of how much square footage of commercial office, how many units of multifamily or single family. So they can, they can do the, on a worksheet, they can estimate the number of trips that are going to be coming from the new development. And then you take that number of trips, you subtract the trips that are coming from any existing development, and whatever's left over, that determines, have you met that 1,000 threshold or that 150 threshold? So that's how, that's how it'll work. All right, so that's, I just wanted to take this opportunity to revisit that, that situation. All right, moving on, the land use table, here's, here's how we have sort of tried to demonstrate our reduction in the requirement for CUPs. What you'll see there is an, that's actually the complete table in your current code with all the situations requiring a CUP highlighted in yellow. So here's an excerpt from the new code, and you can see, and I just pulled the first, you know, the first however many that is, 30 or something. And so you can see for, for those uses, there's quite a few less CUPs required. It's not the same use, I mean, same, you know, list, but it's just an indication of how much, how many fewer I think we're going to, we're ending up with. All right, parking. We wanted to update the requirements to reflect current practices and the new list of uses, filling in any... and the new list of uses, filling in any gaps where we needed to. There are some types of activities that have unique parking characteristics associated with them, daycare centers, medical offices, a little different than regular office, so things like that. So we wanted to highlight those. And I will say, there was some question about bicycle parking, and the, the way we landed on that was that that's most likely to be an issue in the downtown arts and culture district, so that would be part of the overlay. We're not specifically addressing it as, as a standard zoning requirement across the board. I just pulled a few examples of parking standards. The first set, the first four there are various office uses. So you can see that the first two or three, banks, general business offices, and veterinary services, all park the same way, one for 300. Medical office, I mean, you've all, you've all been sitting in the, in the waiting room. You know that it didn't move quite as quickly as some of those other types of office uses. So one per 200 is the proposed ratio. But if you look in the right column, you can see compared to what the ratios previously were, we've, we've even done some, some refinement there. The next couple of categories are retail centers, and you see them in both small and medium categories, and in the large, in the large, the retail that carries large items like furniture and appliances. So you see a, a difference there. And then the last is just an example of residential. Right now, all of your single family essentially is two spaces per unit. The townhome category has a little bit different parking requirement because townhome lots are so narrow, there has to be guest parking somewhere, so there's a requirement for guest parking. But, but the, the CRC felt very strongly about changing the way multifamily parking was calculated, and they asked that it be based upon the number of bedrooms in the unit. So you see there, a one, one bedroom unit would have one and a half spaces. Two bedroom unit would have two spaces, and a three bedroom or more unit would have two and a half. And then, right now, the office has to park separately. We feel like this will cover that. And then what happens a lot of times in a multifamily complex is some guy will haul his boat in there and take up six spaces. So there needs, there's a requirement, parking of those kinds of vehicles is allowed in a multifamily unit, but there'd be a separate designated area, so it doesn't.
Quick clarification. Your first column, parking standard?
Uh-huh.
Explain that to me.
Beg your pardon?
I don't understand parking standard.
Oh, the, the numbers?
Yeah.
That's just the number in the parking table, in the overall parking table. Sorry, good question. All right, let's move on to non-conformities, which is obviously when you're doing a change like this, changing zoning code, changing a zoning map, this is something that's of great interest to property owners. So our non-conformity section talks about lots, structures, uses, and site elements. Non-conforming, the definition would be a lot, structure, use, or site element that existed or operated legally until a new code was adopted. So upon the adoption of this code, some uses may or may, you know, may become non-conforming. Now, this does not apply to signs, very specifically does not apply to signs. Now, for, if, if a use does become non-conforming, or currently is, it can continue to, to exist and operate even after the new code is adopted, as long as it's not enlarged or expanded. And that means the area within the building that's occupied by the non-conforming use can't increase, the, the non-conforming building size cannot increase, and the use could not expand into the building that's in, or another building. All right, also, the number of residential units or non-conforming uses or units could not increase, nor could the seating capacity for a non-conforming use or the storage, loading, parking area that's needed to support it. So a non-conforming use can change to another non-conforming use, either of a same or a more restrictive zoning category. So if for some reason you're in a place that no longer allows a C2 type of a use, it could, another C2 use could move in, or a C1 could use could move in, but not a C3. See what I'm saying? All right. But for example, in that example, if it used to be a C2 use and it's changed to a C1 use, it can go back to a C2 if it's non-conforming. If a use, a non-conforming use is abandoned for six months or more, it's no longer considered legally non-conforming. So criteria for abandonment would include the use is actually discontinued, that there is no usage of utilities, water, sewage, electricity, that sort of thing, and the property is not being marketed for sale or lease. And, you know, this, those are several criteria. These are always difficult determinations to make, but that is, that is the type of thing that your staff would be looking for to determine whether a use has been officially abandoned.
Is there a determination on the sale or lease, length of ti, um, any clarification on that?
The way it's always been interpreted where I have been, if there's a sign on the property, it's not considered abandoned because it's being marketed. That's one, one simple explanation. Okay, a non-conforming use or structure can actually be reinstated or rebuilt if it's discontinued or destroyed because of some natural disaster, or a war, or some sort of calamity like that. And it was a desire of, of your, of the CRC that even if it was totally destroyed, it could be rebuilt as long as the new construction or reconstruction is initiated within six months of the event, and it doesn't make the new building more non-conforming than the previous building. That's pretty lenient, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good deal for somebody who finds himself in that situation. Next, a non-conforming structure or site element can be repaired in order to keep it safe. You can maintain the parking lot, replace landscape material. There may be a requirement for a building permit, but that doesn't, you know, that doesn't mean that you can't do it. State law basically follows along these same sorts of lines. If you annex a property and, and it's no longer conforming once it's annexed, it's allowed these same entitlements in terms of its flexibility. And if a, a property owner has a desire to reinstate a non-conforming use, it doesn't meet the criteria, or expand it, or expand the structure, or whatever, or to determine whether their non-conforming rights are actually in effect or not, the ZBA is the body that they would go to, to, with, with that particular type of request. All right, getting close to the end. The last several sections are just about, just some administrative stuff about permits and who's responsible for enforcement, what happens if the zoning changes, well, you're in litigation on something and effective date, just very, very standard stuff. I will point out to you that the ordinance as drafted currently has an appendix in it that includes graphics that show, that demonstrates several of the basic terms and concepts, as well as some of those unique features like the height setback of system that we talked about. It'll also include the land use table. And just very quickly, it's an alphabetical listing of the uses. And you can see across the top that we've, we've divided the zoning districts into residential, non-residential, and special, just like they are within the ordinance. And then when you see a P, that means the use is permitted. When you see a C, it's a conditional use. If it's blank, it's not permitted. There are some notes over in the right-hand column if there are some little hints or extra things that a person might need to be aware of. And the appendix will also include, sorry, two maps, the, the overall zoning map and a map of the downtown core. Wanted to point out to you that your ordinance currently has a special use district section in it that we have eliminated based upon discussion with CRC. Most of the uses in it, I don't think there are ones that you would be certainly seeking to attract to your community. If somebody does bring something to you or wants to propose to you, they can ask for a CUP if they want to do one of those things. All right, so let me, if I may, wrap up to just revisit some of the, the information that was provided at the beginning of the presentation about our project goals. We wanted to create a user-friendly ordinance, so we wanted to simplify and streamline the code. We have done that in part by reducing the number of zoning districts from 49 to 17. That's 65% fewer. We have now a standard format, remember the table I showed you for zoning district regulations, that should make it easier to use. In terms of revising out-of-date standards and uses, we've added new uses and expanded the overall land use table, reduced the number of CUP uses, based the setback in height on zoning district, not use. We have updated standards for parking and drive-through facilities, eliminated the special use district. In order to address inconsistencies and minimize the need for interpretation by staff, again, the definitions section should help with that. We added some requirements where they were missing. And to minimize non-conformities, we have relaxed some standards in the inappropriate cases for residential, or really kind of almost all the districts, in particular area and height regulations. And then in the commercial districts, as I told you, we have eliminated the, the side and rear yard setback requirement unless there's a single-family adjacency. In order to support the Kerrville 2050 vision, we have added the new mixed-use category and revised the standards for the downtown district to emphasize arts and culture. We've created some additional residential options to acknowledge your affordable housing challenge. We've implemented the district, the distance and separation requirements from your water source. And we have plans to develop some overlay guidelines for downtown and the river quarter in the next phase of the project. Now, in a second, Drew's going to come up and talk to you about changes that have been discussed and were, are part of the proposal since the P and Z hearing last. But one of the things that I wanted to say to you is that, and we emphasize this at P and Z, we know today that this ordinance is not perfect. It's a big change. What's going to happen is, sometimes what happens in day one is somebody's going to bring you something and you're going to do one of these. And so staff has a plan for that, has a cure for that. And Drew, we'll talk about that, I think, in a second. But just, I, I, what I want to emphasize is that those things need to be kept track of, and you need to plan to update your ordinance on a periodic basis. The date of the last ordinance was 19, you know, big overhaul was 1997. Don't do that again, please. It's better for all of us, you particularly as a city, to keep, to keep the updates coming more regularly. And, and, and just because there was an update that's necessary, that doesn't mean that everyone didn't do a really good job because, as I said, this is just a huge change. And it's an ordinance that was developed for your community. It's, it's, it's very Kerrville-specific, and we, our hope is that it works much better for you going forward, so.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you very much.
As Monica pointed out, I'm going to cover a couple of changes that have occurred since the planning and zoning commission hearing. We did have some additional public input from property owners and citizens within the community. One of the, several of the changes affect the downtown arts and culture district. We added drive-through restaurants allowed by right in the downtown arts and culture district and the downtown core. Waved the parking requirements for existing buildings. Again, that's in the current code, I'm just carrying that over. And as Monica just mentioned, we are going to implement a process for consideration of zoning applications over the next six months for property owners, through some dialogue with staff to see if it, either we missed the mark on the new zoning district that was applied to those properties, or if it was in a, a small area adjustment. And also coming back in six months with an update to the actual code itself, keeping track of those changes and whether they be issues or wins that we've got, just to bring back an update. Some of the changes that were amended, again, most of these are in the downtown arts and culture district, which we also mirrored in the mixed-use district. Appliance store, bookstore, hardware store, museum, pawn shop, restaurant with drive-through, and small animal veterinary services are now allowed downtown. Some of those uses have been updated to include sales and rental. For example, the appliance and bookstore, both allow for rental of appliances, books, games, and other videos and such. For the downtown arts and culture district, we added the fuel sales and convenience store with fuel sales as a conditional use permit. And that's actually consistent with the central business district that we have currently. An update, based on the care facilities, we added several new terms and definitions to those to be more consistent with different statutes within the state law for how these care facilities are operated, and removed some outdated or unused terms that you can see listed here. Based on legislation from House Bill 2439, we removed and revised some of the material requirements or prohibitions in the RT zoning district and the skirting requirements for manufactured homes or temporary construction buildings, based on the building code rather than based on a specific material. Amended the mailing service definition that we were going through, discussing with property owners, we found a definition that was incomplete. It had been concatenated through some of the variations that we've had. Removed development activity, because we don't use that term in the code. Monica touched on the supplemental requirements for different uses. We added auto parts store along with the auto repair, car wash, and fuel sales as having some specific requirements when adjacent to the flood plain or Nimitz impoundment area. And established more consistent spacing requirements for those different care facilities that we addressed. And one of the other changes that came out after planning and zoning commission was a small update to property along Camp Meeting Road. And Mark's going to go over the zoning map for you.
Okay, we're on the home stretch here. So related to the zoning map, before we get into showing you the specific map, there were a few things that we wanted to share with you related to the approach. Again, the key to minimizing non-conformities as a part of this process was getting the map right and getting, so we, we've structured the districts through that hard work that Monica did. And then the next step of that is let's make sure that the, the uses that exist, the zoning that's in place, be structured in a way that it's being put in the right category now that we have fewer categories and new categories. So the approach we took is looking at the existing residential zoning districts. They were converted to the proposed residential zoning district, most in alignment with the current zoning. That was the easy first step because so much of your community is residential, and it was really apples to apples to make that transition. The second step was to look at the non-residential zoning districts, and those were based on land use in most cases. So we wanted to say, what's the use that's on the ground today? That, to, to make it the most conforming, let's put it in the district where it will be allowed to exist in the future. What that did is it reduced the amount of existing non-conformities, and new non-conformities that arose were primarily parcels inside the future investment areas identified by the community during the Kerrville 2050 comprehensive planning process. So we knew that within those strategic investment areas, when we did 2050, we were creating new opportunities in those areas for a much higher level of development. So we knew that there might be some non-conformities going forward. And then finally, the location-specific changes were then incorporated to further reduce non-conformities. So for, for the most part, what we found in the non-residential districts, where we looked at the use on the ground and translated it, in some cases, there were residential buildings in non-residential districts or districts that allowed both. And so since it might be a residential use today, the first pass, we put a lot of those into a residential district. And it was brought to our attention through the CRC and through public hearing that that's probably not the best approach because there was a higher level of development or a commercial use that was actually allowed in the zoning. So we went case by case and identified those things and made specific changes to those to, again, try to reduce that number of non-conformities going forward. So your current zoning map, I'm going to reiterate that the key changes you'll see on that legend, you see 49 districts. It's quite difficult in some cases to make out the difference between colors because there's so many colors on the map. Second thing I'll point out is if somebody wanted to come and create a, a, a new development here, and it's a developer that's based in Washington DC or in New Orleans or someplace else, they would come and look at your old map and say, I'm not sure where I can develop this because it's not specific to the colors you would typically use for the different types of uses. So with the new zoning map, again, we're down to 17 districts. We're no longer looking at things geographically. We've really specified the use colors, or the zoning colors based upon the typical colors that you would see so that developers. colors that you would see so that developers around the country would be able to look at this map and say, yeah, that makes sense to me. I can go to this area right here. So a summary of the zoning map changes made since, since the P&amp;Z, there were minor adjust, and, and these were made as requested in the motion by P&amp;Z, I'll add. There were minor adjustments to some properties as a result of discussion at P&amp;Z. Many of those were the Brinkman properties that were brought up during that, during that discussion. We amended the zoning for Camp Meeting Road property to M U along the front of the property. Again, that was as, as requested by P&amp;Z. And overall, we reduced the non-conforming properties by approximately 75% from the previous map that we had shown. And again, this excludes the central district, business district and the downtown arts and culture. But we, we have significantly reduced the number of non-conformities through this process. So I think the slide you were waiting for, we will turn it back to you, Mayor, for discussion. We're happy to answer any questions along the way.
I would just like to say that, you know, this, this is not particularly exciting. However, it is absolutely essential. And, and, and part of my experience in regard to this and excitement about what has, has happened is I was vice chairman of the comprehensive plan for the city in 2002. And we specifically encouraged, mandated, or whatever, reducing the number of zoning districts. And never happened till now. But that is significant to go from 49 to 17. One other word I would say, and then I want to open this up to the council. If I were a business owner here going through all of this, I, I might could kind of feel like, whoa, you're putting me on a short leash. You're, you're squeezing me with some of this, limiting me. But I will tell you, the commitment of the CRC and of our consultants and of our staff is to be a business-friendly city. And we really work at that and, and, and want to see that happen. All right, council members, questions or observations?
Well, I just want to, as someone that's participated in these meetings, I'm, I'm among one of, one of many. Mark and Monica, I want to thank you. I mean, y'all do yeoman's work. It is a lot. It's very technical and, and really appreciate you and, and the staff coming together on that and working with the committee and working through planning and zoning. It's a lot. And I, and I appreciate the expertise you brought to the meetings to give us a starting and a jumping off point. To, to, to go forward with, with what Mayor said, you know, for me, attainable housing and being business-friendly is very, very key. And when I look at these things and think about the non-conformities, the simplicity, meeting industry standards, all of these things are going to lead us to, in my opinion, what we need to do to, it's like the infrastructure, right? For putting together a business, business-friendly environment and a environment that encourages creative development to get to that idea of attainable housing. This is a great first step. So that's all I have. I just want to, I just want to say thank you.
I, I just want to say already out of the gate, it appears as if we did have some of those moments where we had to rethink something and that I think we, from what I understand, were able to handle it very well. Our staff was prepared and communicative and receptive. So I, that's what I'm hoping continues. And of course, we're going to have hurdles and challenges, but already seeing how they wanted to work with some of these obstacles and did, I'm encouraged that we will. So, thank you, staff.
I just want to say thank you to Monica and Mark also. This has been a huge, huge project and you've done a marvelous job. One question I had, patio home would be the same thing as a garden home?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So just, we know it's not perfect and there will be things that will come along, but you've just, you've, you've made a wonderful, wonderful difference. We've just, we've heard for years that nobody wants to come to Kerrville because they, they don't want us, they don't like us, they're not user-friendly. And I think this is going to go a long, long way. So thank you.
To everybody.
All right. Ms. McElhaney, agree with me, Speaker?
We have three citizen speakers signed up.
Okay.
George Burdi.
George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. So a couple of things, I mean, echoing what everybody said, obviously it's a huge undertaking and we appreciate the, the work and the efforts in that. The, the, the extra couple of things, I mean, I, I know of a couple of changes that were made and those are, those are good, those are helpful. It's nice to see that some feedback was given and changes were made already. Couple of concerns I had, the section 6010, she mentioned it, refers to like kind of re, reviewing the, the zones periodically and doing updates. Was that to imply that it would be a staff-driven update or a citizen-driven update? You know what I'm saying? Got a question? Well, I'll just go through a couple of questions, but that, that was one. The other was, back to that alcohol prohibition ordinance that you all just passed recently, it refers to residentially zoned areas, but does not really clarify what that means. And we now have residential zones and we also have some zones that are special zones like the DAC, for instance, that allow residents zoning in them. So would they be considered residentially zoned areas or not? And if they're not, we might want to clarify that somewhere. And as she mentioned, I guess the mixed-use zone is possibly having some residential use in it and changing some rules based on that. And if this was one, I think Mr. Howard would probably be upset because his, his little corner there at G Street would be affected. And then I'm not sure I get, this isn't really a question as much as a thought, mutually exclusive, the, we have so many districts that are mutually exclusive of commercial and residential, so we're not really mixing them. It kind of minimizes the ability of live near your work or, as well as sort of the efficiency of land use where you have a 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week activity going on. If, if the whole area is residential use, then it's empty during the day and busy at night. And same on the commercial side, a lot of it will end up being busy during the night and not during the day. Kind of more mixed use might be, you know, better. The, and then the last thing is more of a, a thank you for somebody whoever it was who finally decided to address the boarding home definition, which obviously has been an issue for about a year and a half that's been pointed out. In this last iteration of it, it got defined in a way that I think gets you out of the kind of inconsistent enforcement of permitting, which is good to see. I just wish it had been a little sooner and maybe it hadn't got so much pushback, pushback when it was requested in the beginning. So, I mean, better late than never, I guess. So, yeah, the, the only question was really that one, is it referring to the proactive sort of zone modification? If that's going to be driven by citizens themselves requesting the change or staff sort of saying, we think this area should be rezoned?
I'm going to make an assumption that we're talking about changes there driven by citizens, staff and council.
Not exclusive.
Yeah, yeah, so it's.
Any, or even P&amp;Z or Connet.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'd like to, it's a good point. On the alcohol use, Mr. Paxton, how is that going to be applied?
The residential districts are those identified in the first section of zoning districts, the R districts, R1, or excuse me, RE, R1, R1A, R2, R3, RN and RT.
Those are the only districts that that ordinance applies to. So not the mixed use, not the downtown business district.
Right. So once you have that mixed use, you know you have commercial and residential in similar locations, so that separation is not required.
Can I suggest clarifying that in the ordinance? Because the words, the English language words in the ordinance.
You have to get this on these tapes.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Burdi, I, I, I think it was, it's registered. Okay, go ahead and share that.
I'm just saying that the, the big thing is just clarified in the ordinance because that one actually says residentially zoned areas. And so there's that conflict, so.
Well, I actually made the same point and, and it was, and it was, the clarification was, it was what a residential is. And so there's, there's the RE, R1, R1A, R2. Those are the residential, so those are the specific ones that are going to, am I, am I correct in, in saying that, Drew? So that's where, that's where the differentiation is made in the actual zoning category.
I know. So one of their goals of the whole thing was to get rid of the interpretation. Right now, it sits in some interpretation because we got different word. But we also just have somebody look over because there's a neighborhood bar, for instance, on Pascal, sitting in a residential zone. So you might want to just double-check the city doesn't do that.
Ah, okay, okay. All right, we have another speaker?
William Rector.
Thank you, William Rector, 705 Water Street. Want to commend you on creating the downtown core and the downtown arts and culture district. I do have a question about that. One of the things that we are hoping to develop downtown is downtown living, residential areas. Would that create this as a mixed-use area and would the open space requirements that you talked about for residential be a requirement for downtown?
Drew, can you respond to that or Monica, either one?
So the downtown arts and culture district does allow for residential uses. So you do have the mixed-use piece. The downtown core is the same list of uses for downtown arts and culture district. The open space requirement is only in the mixed-use, it is not requirement in downtown.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank, thank you very much. I'm glad to see that you're going to be working on a river corridor overlay. I think that's one of our greatest assets. And I read the zoning that you're looking at tonight and the river is not included in that. And so I, I think it's important that we look at a river corridor overlay and we look at height restrictions or some usage to protect our river as development occurs. The downtown arts and culture district, I particularly applaud, I would encourage you to look at extending the Earl Garrett district down to Marta Street where Peterson Plaza is. I would encourage you to look at Clay Street being extended to Barnett Street to include the developments that are going on beyond Jefferson Street on Clay. Thank you.
Hi, y'all. I'm Rachel Fitch, 233 Earl Garrett. And I just wanted to thank you, my staff and family. Thank you for your hard work, for all of you, the all facets of what this has taken, this process and the dedication to our city. I think sometimes thank yous are not heard loud and clear on the television. And so I think that you've all done a fabulous job, you know, taking into all the nuances of what we as citizens want to make our city a better place to live and work. And I just wanted to say thank you all. Thank you all, city, city council members, all of you, mayor, everybody. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, business owners.
Do we have anyone else?
Yes, we have Stephen King.
Mayor, Council, Stephen King, 242 Creekwood, Kerrville, Texas. Live in the county, but I own numerous properties in the city and commercial at this time. I've, I've, y'all done a great job on this. Unfortunately, I've just figured out that I, I have two other businesses we run out of, out of the city, so I don't put a lot of my time into the.
King, can you speak up? I'm sorry.
I put a lot of time into running a bit our commercial properties here. And we just purchased two properties on G Street that I've just, in, in looking at everything, they're non-conforming, as is almost all the properties on G Street going from the river up to the Texas Hill Country Bank, the New Bank. Almost all those properties are non-conforming. There's the transmission, Kerrville Transmission, that would be non-conforming. The car lot across the street, Andy Sanchez, the, there's another, the only conforming property on there would be the little strip mall, which I think is about half-empty right now. So the two properties we just purchased are about three and a half acres on G Street. One of them is the Hill Country Telephone, the lot where they work out of there, keep all the telephone company stuff to do for Windstream and to Hill Country Telephone. That, that is rented out to a company out of San Angelo who does that service for the community. And they've been there for a good while. That, that would be non-conforming in this, in this new zoning thing. So what, as it would be the other property, the two acres we bought on down the street, which is a storage for a contractor, there's a contractor storing some of his building materials in there. And then we have a garage in there, have a mechanic shop, a light repair mechanic shop. So those would be non-conforming. Is there a mechanism that we can get this looked at with you guys? Because it's not, I mean, it, it, it's different from one side of the river to the other side of the river. Okay?
Some of the emphasis behind this area is it is kind of an extension of one of our catalyst areas along the river. This area also has some concerned areas with fire protection. So any redevelopment is going to have to be looked at significantly. Several of these buildings cannot get any extensions or additions to those because we do not have adequate fire flow because that's out of our water source CCN. So we use the mixed use both to extend that catalyst area and so that when this area does redevelop, it's obviously going to be a significant redevelopment at that point to take into account the fire flow and the existing infrastructure. But yes, we can certainly look at, see what are the best options.
We have no sewer on that side of the street.
Right.
It's, we're on septic on that side of the street, as is, now the property that's behind us is C3, which is a field. That's a part of a grape and grain in a field, which connects with another 12 acres of property we own along the River Trail. We own 12 acres along there, which is also, which we don't have a problem with that one. But I have three tenants in these properties currently that are on leases and they're non-conforming. And for us to conform with any of the uses that are available under mixed use would pretty much require building new buildings.
Right.
Because I don't, I can't put a brew, I don't have a brew pub there right now. I don't have a, a car wash or something like that. I mean, they're all, they're all so far away from that property use that it would be, it would be uneconomic to even consider it at this point. I mean, to go from a telephone pole, a guy, the telephone company to a, a use that's under mixed use would be, it would be cost-effective. So, I mean, I just, it looks like to me that's a, a minor fault in this. And I, as far as my, my plan is, because we just purchased a property 30 days ago.
Right.
And so we can't talk about it?
Yeah, we can certainly.
Okay. That'll work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Peggy McKay, 103 West Chester, Kerrville. I rode as fast as I could and I couldn't get everything down in the zoning changes. But I thought it said something about getting approval of 20% coming for approval, but it didn't say 20% of what?
Okay, I think what you're referring to is state law says that if 20% of the property within 200 feet of a tract that's in for rezoning files written protests, so not 20% of the owners, but 20% of the property area, then the council has to vote three out of four, 75%, in order to overturn, in order to approve, you know, over the opposition.
Okay. And the other one was, we can't get 3/4% of council. It had to be 3/5 or 4/5?
It's, you have five, so it's going to be four or five of you.
Okay. And then the other part on the standards, when they were talking about sufficient space of the parking spaces. In Kerrville, you have a lot of very large vehicles. And to maneuver to get into some of these spaces is just about impossible. Where Soaring Dragon is, is. Where Soaring Dragon is, is, is perfect example. I'm not sure about the width of the space, but the maneuverability to get in and out of. Is that going to, is that addressed in here?
No, that'll be covered under a separate ordinance. So this, here we cover the number of spaces required. There will be a separate ordinance, development standards, that talks about parking lot design and construction. Yet to come.
Okay, anyone else?
That is all that has signed up.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, back to the council, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, it's still public hearing because they don't have to sign up.
Oh, yeah, 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 right, right. Okay, Corey.
Corey Walters, thirty-four forty-four Comanche Trace Boulevard. Uh, I was, my, my question is really relative to the T I A that the consultants, the traffic impact analysis, that the consultants suggested that if something generates over one thousand cars per day, is that correct? That a T I A would be required. I'm curious if, if you have a T I that does show that road improvements are needed, is that going to be incumbent upon the developer or the city or a combination of both? Where does the council stand on what they're looking for out of that T I A?
Drew, I'm going to put you on the spot again.
I'll take that.
Okay.
So it basically becomes information for decision making. And, um, for example, here recently, we had one done for H E B. It helped them to understand how traffic moved around their facility and what sort of changes might need to be made to roadways, especially with the closure of Hayes for that one block. In their case, they are having to, to, at their cost, development cost, to, to move signals and, and move drainage and so forth. But usually it's going to be borne by development unless the city is already planning something in that area.
Very good. I like the, that answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bruce, I'm sorry, Mr. Stricki.
Bruce is good. Mr. Stricki lives in Burnet. Six fifteen Earl Garrett, Bruce Stricki. First, again, a great process that's been going on that's involved not only the community, but staff and the consultants and business owners. It's, the whole process has been really super. I'm, I'm very concerned about overlays. And so I just, I know we're working on them. I know some of the issues that overlays would address have been, have been, been added into the code, which I really appreciate. And, and that's, I think, important, but the overlays like the River Zone and some others are very important to keeping the zone on the, the ideas that were presented through the 2050 plan by the community on track and working toward that. And so I'm, I'm very, I'm very concerned about that. Um, looking at the zoning map that was in the packet, the downtown core, it wasn't clear to me that the downtown core was represented in the downtown arts and cultural district. And I, and I think that might be an addition that we would want to have in that map. I'm very confused about manufactured homes and industrialized homes. In, in the definitions of industrialized homes, it says refer to manufactured homes. But then in the special down in sixty-sixty, it actually has different sections for where manufactured homes can go and where industrialized homes can go. And there are developers that are looking at Kerrville and affordable housing and thinking about how to use those mechanisms. And so it's just confusing. I couldn't, and I, and I haven't spent a lot of time on it, but it wasn't clear enough. So I think we need, that is something that I think we need looked at. I'm grateful that we're going to continue to look at the inconsistencies because they're going to come up in the next six to twelve to eighteen months. And I'm grateful that we have a community where we can talk about these things and work towards solutions and, and find ways to make Kerrville a better place. And that is something that not only you all are doing, but the people who come to these meetings and get involved in the, in the review committees and the draft committees and the zoning and the sign and all that stuff. We have a great community where there's involvement. So thank us for letting us do that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
All right. Do I have a motion in regard to this?
Can I, can I ask something really quickly? Is it appropriate to ask for, if we, if we determine we want to move forward to ask for some of the questions that were asked to be clarified before the next meeting or to at least be, to, to be looked at and brought back?
Sure, sure, we'll be doing that.
Okay, perfect. That's all I had.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we adopt ordinance number twenty nineteen dash seventeen to approve and adopt the City of Kerrville, Texas zoning code.
All right, okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, let it be done by the raised hand. All right, okay. And we are out of the public hearing at seven fifty-six. Okay, now let's take a look at ordinance twenty nineteen sixteen. Would you read that in the background?
Ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen, second reading. An ordinance ordering a special election to be held on November fifth, twenty nineteen for the purpose of submitting propositions to voters for proposed amendments to the city charter, establishing early voting locations and polling places for this election, making provisions for the conduct of the election and providing for public review. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Okay.
I only have sixty-five slides. So I don't have any. This is the second reading of an ordinance. And you all have seen this over off and on for over a month now. The ordinance quite simply will call an election on the fifth of November in, in conjunction with the statewide election. And then, of course, it sets out the amendments as proposed by the, the original C R C, I might add, Charter Review Commission. Thanks again to that group that they did a great job in cobbling together amendments that they believe are necessary. So in drafting the ordinance, quite simply, I just started with, with their report and I dropped it all into this ordinance that's before you. It accepts the report, it again orders the special election, and then it sets out the amendments first in measures. And so it's, it's very clear, I think, on what's being amended. And then it cobbles together those measures into nineteen propositions, basically. So that's what's before you on second reading. And I'll wait to see what happens next. And, and what will happen next, assuming you all adopt it on second reading tonight, is I'll then go start preparing the publication that'll go in the newspaper. It'll, it'll be published twice per state law. And then we'll prepare the ballot and then move toward that election.
As city attorney, would you state briefly what the role of the charter is?
The role of the charter quite simply is, is the city's constitution. And it's frankly, it's, it's the first document that I go to when you all ask or staff ask, can we do this? And I, I look at that, you know, in conjunction with state law at times to see if we're preempted from doing things or state law directs how we do things. But it, it's our constitution.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, uh, council members, any questions or comments?
I, I have comments and questions. I wasn't here last meeting and so wasn't here for the first reading. And I didn't get my chance to say thank you to Mike and to the committee. I know Mrs. McKay and Michelle are here right now and am I missing anyone else? Great committee and great committee work. I had the opportunity to attend several of the meetings and, and really know the work that went into that. Uh, I do want to say, Mike, I, I, I really think you did a great job. I never felt there was a conflict of interest in what you were doing. You took the direction directly from the committee. I saw that. And, and that's your job as attorney to listen and interpret and to draw up documents. So I just wanted to state that. And then I did have one thing that I kind of, I did mention before I left that I, that I wanted to just bring up for discussion. And that's just one of the amendments. I value the work and appreciate the work of the committee. I just wanted to consider that one of the pieces of the amendment, I'd want to maybe for myself take out of the change to the charter review, which would be the, the change in the pay scale for council and for mayor. My preference would be to leave it as is right now. But there's five of us here and I'm one, so I'm just throwing that out as a discussion. And.
Okay, should we deal with that at this point?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, do you want, do you want a, by cons, by consensus or vote?
No, he said, I listened, he said we could, you're stat changing.
I should be more discussion, right, you have a speaker.
More discussion and.
I'm, I'm guessing that there's other, one other individual that's spoken to me. Probably somebody else.
Okay, okay.
Are we going to speak, or, I'm on the.
All right. Then we're going to proceed to any other questions? We're going to have the speaker? And then we can amend before we vote?
Can, yeah, absolutely.
But Mr. Mayor, I would like to support what Councilwoman Clarkson has just said. And I would like to also just to have that measure G removed and we just revert to the old on that one.
All right.
And I would add to that, that it, it was never a thought in my mind anyway. Thank you, committee, for thinking that it was necessary.
Yes.
Because that says that you recognize the amount of time and effort we put into this. However, we didn't sign up for a paycheck. We did it because we wanted to serve our community and be a servant to the city. So I, I was fine leaving it like it is. So if you feel that strongly, I'm in agreement with just striking measure G.
Actually, I did sign up for the paychecks.
We need to have your head examined.
I think.
I don't care anything about it.
Well, for, for, here, the deal is each council person receives fifty dollars a month. So that's, that's our pay. And the committee had recommended raises for us. Now, what I want to know is, do we proceed to vote on that now or after we hear the speaker?
I would hear the speaker and then we'll just take whatever motion you all have.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
Roman Garcia.
Yeah.
Uh, Roman Garcia, nine thirty-four Pecan Street. I wasn't planning on speaking on that item that you did bring up, but I do support it as a citizen of the city and now as a new registered voter. So I do also support keeping the payment as it is. I do have two points I was going to address on this. On the first one is in section five of the ordinance. It states that you're going to be using the, the voting method. It's going to be a heart voting system. So does that mean that there will not be any paper ballots? That was my first question.
You know?
I don't know off the top of my head, which follows state law.
Okay.
So, and the county runs our elections and so, I mean, we, I can get the answer back to council and to the speaker.
I had asked that question and, and I think they said there would, still would be.
Oh, you did ask the question, I remember that.
Okay.
Yes, both.
Okay, thank you. And then the second one was on, it's on page eight of the ordinance, but it's on section seven point oh one, the city attorney and the qualifications. It's not actually about the qualifications of the city attorney, but more as to, well, basically, section A talks about how the city attorney can select assistant attorneys, but with the approval of the city council. It just states, "The city attorney or such other assistants selected by the city attorney with the approval of the city council shall represent the city in all legal matters to include prosecution within municipal court." And then the next section right after that, section B, it says, "The city council or," and this part is being added in, "the city attorney following written notice to city council may engage in special counsel at any time it deems necessary and appropriate." So I was wondering first, why would we have the approval of assistant attorneys and then not outside legal counsel? I was just wondering on that, the Charter Review Commission didn't provide any rationale in their document that I'm looking at. It just says it was to clarify, condense, and simplify the existing wording. The annual review requirement is maintained. And they suggested that the sixty days following the election, you know, the super majority vote that is also there to remove the city attorney, but I'm not talking about that issue. So I was just wondering, what would be the difference in that? Why would we need the approval for assistant attorneys and not outside legal counsel, special counsel?
You know, I don't want to speak for the C R C, but I, those are two separate positions. One, the assistant city attorney is going to be an employee of the city. Outside counsel is going to be someone that I, and I do it now, hire under contract for a specific purpose, like representing us in litigation, you know, some specific assignment where after the assignment's gone, they're, they, they will no longer be working for us.
Okay, so that was, that's kind of what I was wondering. So it's not simply used, I guess, for advice, but also for litigate, litigation on behalf of the city too?
For the.
For the special counsel?
Special counsel, right.
Okay. I was just wondering that I would probably recommend amending that because it's being added in to now allow the city attorney to, you know, give that. It really, it just says to give written notice to city council. And it also doesn't provide anything that would give you the authority or the right to say, we don't want that special counsel. You know, we either want to go with somebody instead or we just don't need city, or a special counsel at all. So I would want to know if you all would consider probably changing that to allow either for the approval of city council or to put in a section that would allow city council the authority to, you know, ignore that.
I wouldn't personally, I think it has worked extremely well over eighteen years. Mr. Hayes has been here and gives him the flexibility that he needs to in a timely fashion reach out to outside counsel.
Well, and, and let me say two things too. It, I'm always going to be, and my successor will always be constrained by a budget. And let me just put it this way too, as bluntly as I can. A city attorney who routinely hires outside counsel without consulting his client isn't going to be here very long. So I think it's worked well the way it's, you know, I've, I've used it certainly to this point. I think the charter is going to be, is clear and I, I don't anticipate any issues.
All right, okay, thank you.
So then if I can, I just, sorry, I just wanted to get a clear, so the, basically the only reason for the approval is because it'd kind of be like an employee of the city? Is that the, for the assistant attorneys?
My opinion on it is we, we have, we hire an attorney to represent us. And if he has recommendations to us, I'm going to take those recommendations.
Sure.
And if one of those recommendations is to hire outside counsel, he does not have to come to me. That's what I've hired him to do.
Sure. I was just, I was just wondering, because there's like a difference between the assistant attorneys that they have to get approval and.
We got that. Okay, do we have any other speakers?
Thank you.
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So in regard to ordinance twenty nineteen sixteen, I am, I am assuming that we, that there will be a motion to pass this with the revision of taking out the information on the salaries.
Is that how we were?
Okay.
That, I will make that motion in whatever way it needs to be, to be, to be formulated in regards to approving on second reading with the, with taking out the one revision.
Yeah.
I don't know how to, how to.
I, I'm hearing a motion that was made to adopt the ordinance on second reading, but taking out measure G with respect to the compensation.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my motion.
It's cutting.
I'll second that.
Got a motion second. All in favor, raise the hands. Right now, I'm going to tell you, I'm in trouble because I told Dina with this raise, we'd go on an ocean cruise.
I, I told you you could have your.
And that's, ah, boy.
Sorry to dash those hoes.
Uh, no, I've got it.
Well, how about take them to the, the new restaurants?
All right. So, resolution number twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. Okay, hey.
She's a reader.
Resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty nineteen. A resolution setting forth the ad valorem property tax rate to be considered for adoption for the twenty nineteen tax year. Calling two. Calling two public. Calling two public hearings prior to the adoption of said rate and calling a public hearing prior to the adoption of the fiscal year 2020 budget as required by both the city's charter and state law. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right, okay. All right. Ms. Dozier?
Okay, good evening, mayor and council. I know you all are very familiar with the proposed 2020 budget because we've been talking about it extensively since June. You've attended three workshops and asked lots of individual questions. We're now entering the very prescriptive phase of budget process. The Texas tax code and the local government code give us real specific guidance on how the process must proceed from here on. So the first step is passing a resolution. And that resolution is, as our city secretary just read, it does several different things. It sets the maximum property tax rate to be considered for adoption, which this resolution has that rate at 54 cents per $100 of assessed value. And that's lowering the tax rate from 55.14 to 54 cents. Sets the two public hearings on the tax rate, one public hearing on the budget. And then it also directs the publication of required notices. After a resolution is passed, those notices will be published in the paper, this, the newspaper this week. Kirk County publishes the tax rate notice, the city publishes the budget notice. We have required disclosures in the budget book. All of this information will be available on the website and it will also be on the public access channel. And we've seen this many times before, but this is our calendar one more time so you can see where we are in the process. So this is the tax rate resolution. And then we'll move into public hearings and ordinance votes in the weeks following. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, council?
I think we're questioned out, but probably we'll have more.
The citizen speaker declined.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 29-2019.
Okay, second. Got a motion second. All in favor, raised hand, and it passes. Okay, we come to board appointments. And is it best for us to go into executive session?
I was going to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we go into executive session to discuss this a little further since we've all been traveling and we haven't had a chance to collect our thoughts under the section 551.074.
All right, okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, raise hands. Okay, I will tell you, this will be the last item unless we suggest some future agenda items. And we will not be long, but you probably don't want to stay.
But you can.
But you can.
That's right.
But you can.
We will come out. We will.
I love that statement, by the way.
Good. At 8:18, we are back in session with one lone citizen, Mr. Stricki.
You get the prize.
Oh, that's true, that's true. She's a journalist, so. Okay, all right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that regarding the openings that we have on the Z B A board, that we move Robert Irvin into the chair position that was vacated by Danny Almond, make Robert Parks the vice chair. And for the two alternate positions that we have open, I nominate Kate, well, there's two applicants, Kate Morrow and Ernest Garza, both of which have been interviewed and qualified and can now take these positions.
All right.
Second.
Got a second?
Do you want to mention?
Any discussions?
Paul moves up, Paul Zolan moves up.
Okay.
Yeah, don't we need to?
Oh, excuse me, yes.
I think we need to.
We need to clarify that.
One clarification, Paul Zolan, who was currently an alternate, will move up into a current, a permanent member position.
A lot of moving parts there.
Yeah, we've got a second for the clarification.
Let me, if I may, yes, do we need to, I don't think we need to name the, who's chair and vice chair, do we? I think we should leave that up to them.
They do have the chair.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, okay.
All right. All in favor of that motion?
You should.
Motion, you want?
Can we restate it?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should do.
Okay, for the Z B A board openings, I make a motion that we move Robert Irvin into.
No, Paul, Paul Zolan.
Well, oh, just that part?
Yes.
Okay, Paul Zolan from the alternate position into a permanent member position of the board.
And to new alternates.
And to, to new alternates, Kate Morrow and Ernest Garza.
Ms. McLeary, do you have that?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
You think that was so easy.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right, good, okay.
I move that we adjourn.
I.
We are adjourned at 8:20.